Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order for the Polk County Board of Commissioners for October 7th, 2014. All Commissioners are present. First item is approval in minutes at September 30th.
That's all moved forward.
Okay, so discussion. Here again, all those favor certified by Senator.
Aye.
Home Comfort recap, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, it's good to see you all. I was hoping I was gonna see Mr. Flanby, either Joe or Ben, but I think they must be out on the call. As you know, you approved holding the 60th anniversary party for Home Comfort on the Courthouse lawn. It went extremely well. There are a bunch of pictures on Facebook, but these are just a couple to show the lawn. We had Mr. Lennox here, the TV personality, who took pictures with almost everyone on the Courthouse lawn. He had over a thousand people downtown. Everyone said it was fantastic. So on behalf of Home Comfort, want to thank you for the participation and we'll do that. I think it went really well. From the Chamber side, I appreciate that it's not something that we want to do all the time and for every business, for every little thing. This was a big deal and Joe put a lot of work and money into it. So Kim, if they have to be working for the community for Black citizens' business. I don't think there were any issues or cleanup or anything.
No, no way. Went perfect.
Yeah, it went very well. Yeah, yeah. Live music, people hung around for a while. Yeah, they went well, too.
Did they, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
About 45 minutes before the event was over, so that was right.
Absolutely. I heard from a number of people that actually made a point to come down to it to have dinner that night and, so, guess I could interest the local businesses a little bit.
It was great. It was a good evening celebratory, and don't have any business to celebrate enough. So it was, it was very good.
You did the real big one about their...
I know, Mr. TV puts around himself, so.
Well, right into Winterfest.
Winterfest, I believe Hope you have a copy of the letter requesting that we host some for Winterfest on the Courthouse lawn, December 5th, first Friday, as we normally do it. We do have permission from the city to close the parking stalls around before that day as people come in and out and then closing it for Santa and his entourage to arrive that evening. The lights and decorations will go up starting the weekend of November 22nd to 3rd. Just as information for you, we can handle all of that from the Chamber of Visitors, someone working with the fire department and volunteers who've been all those decorations up prior to that. That is coming with what Florida, if she will, will be able to host Winterfest on the Courthouse lawn.
I'm good with it. I'm good with it, yeah. I'm ready for Christmas music, Heather. What do you think? Are you gonna give us any assurances you will actually pull it off this year?
Yes, I, um...
You were starting to get background music, right?
Yeah, I had, I prayed for snow for 200 years, but last year it all came right on Winterfest and it was what you got, but I had to, you know. So this year, no snow, just a nice, dry, very warm evening. Everybody can come out and see Santa and then snow on the six. Snow on the six.
I'd say only in the valley, maybe, because winter's, you know.
I wasn't, I, I know, I know.
We had to, we would be outside now.
There were a few of us that saw it, we lit the tree, Santa did come down.
I had the chains on the pickup, all the way around.
Yeah, it was, it was good, so. No danger of frost, so keep an eye on it. Uh, no. Working really hard.
You never know about the weather, the way, how nice it is here, you know?
Yep, yep.
Maybe it'll switch about then and then the snow will come.
Outdoor events, weather's...
It will, why? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, you're set. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Next item is discussion of the operating levy.
Chairman, I'm the board. Here to talk about the operating levy or the post-operating levy that you may see in your packet is a timetable if the board wishes to pursue a operating levy for public safety May ballot. That would be in 19, 2015, if that's what I mean. It's held, what you have in the packet on the timetable on that is going backwards from the current, the date, the last day, file the issue on the 3rd. So the terms that you can have to do prior to that would be for public hearing. And then have to do a board order, correct, special right to your board, and finally walk into court. So those middle section of that timetable that I gave you are your, well, they have no later candidates. So you have to wait till those days, and I would say maybe not till those days, but no later than those days, you know, those ones that they're otherwise in, most likely in violation and not moving in connection with that, which is part of the 15th and 16th of August, so they may election in 2015. Two items above, the middle section are discussions of whether you want to pursue other outreach type things. Public safety seminars are formed, which allow our public safety officials to sit down and ask some questions, give the public information about where we are, how we got there, what, what has left been poured out of that, and those are things that we probably should do as soon as this month, but probably within the next couple months, if you want to do, goes back out of the information session, if you're sitting at, go off or internal staff recommendation, most likely that, let's say, a number of things. One, recommend you never go out without an election. Two, all the things that involve an election, the duration of it, and you know, if you remember November 13th, we went out for a four-year levy, and we went out for 60 cents for about, that failed. About 50, 42. So, we were not successful on that, we still don't have, you know, 15, we require a little bit, some different amount, a different duration, a whole bunch of that requires a staff recommendation. It could also involve another citizen's community. I don't, I don't think that's necessary at this point. I think, you know, there's a problem, that's why, if you figure that out, then you probably should be sort of, wordsmith. So, just wanted to begin those discussions, with people from the board, invited the DA, Marco, and Sheriff Von Wolf, who's also the chair, Marty's here, to talk about the public safety is going in the best direction along the, I think, so. Basically, we're to open this discussion, move in the same direction, that would decide out the board, to mail that.
Okay. All right. So, I'll ask our senior elected partners to give us their input first, if they would like to.
Sure. As Mr. Hampton said, and I think everybody in the room is well aware, that he certainly has an issue concerning the public safety, limited capabilities right now of public safety. So, I definitely would support us seeking another public safety levy. May is a good time, so the clock's running, and I really feel strongly, and it encourages the board to, to focus on what we can do to get some other private people, you know, that are getting, solid on it. Without question, we've been doing a lot of work, and with Mr. Hampton, and even with some of the city leaders, I've sat down personally and held a meeting with all of the food chiefs of the state, Dallas tribal food chief. We discussed some issues, what the cities might need, where we look through the county board, to move forward with the levy. We've engaged in those discussions and are continuing to have some on that, and those things that will benefit the city agencies, the county board, to be able to have the public safety levy, kind of rebolster some of the sheriff's office patrol division as well as the jail. The jail was real important to the city, and currently, right now, the jail operates every day at minimum staff. The proposal to put back some of those missing positions for court security and transports, and to relieve some of the old type burden on the staff, your levy, are important. I'm really starting to see some, some strain of those folks in jail. Continuing to move forward, the best I can, but you can only squeeze so much out of the person, and it's very, you know, it's later on. I had a meeting yesterday with the presiding judge, talking a little bit about the issue. So, there's just, misunderstanding still seems to be of the general public, but somewhere at least that is bottom line, ever so high. So, that being said, I would be available and would encourage having some, some public meetings talked about. I think the general public is still, has a misunderstanding, that we have this money, that O.T. Timber is going to come back. Now, the current discussions now with the representatives and congress that are saying, "Well, I've got this plan," and then, you know, "How else has that another plan?" I can't believe any of you sitting in this room believe that O.T. Timber might not come back, and so, at least, you know, to the standpoint that it's, return us to the levels that we were. With all of that said, if you handed me the money today, it's gonna take me at least two years, at least two years to get us that, close to where we were, and it'll take another two years to get finished out. If you don't lay off, train law enforcement officers, and they're not sick and around, they have jobs that they've done, most of them went to higher paying jobs, and I can't get those folks back, and so I am stuck with hiring, recruit on level staff, and I think a long time to do so. With that, I certainly support the recommendations, or at least it looks like it, if you're there, to be both, and stand ready to assist you and turn me forward to what it did.
And, here again, Sheriff, and I also support the board out to share the information on public, and I'm glad that this conference, this information, sessions with the public right of county, right now, the DA's office here, the agents, especially, that serves an entire health, in terms of what, serve all, all the cities on the county, in terms of public, who are taking, for those, all the cities, so, make those, from Sheriff's votes, and the, 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 so, even though the people here about the Sheriff have production, or introductions, or arrests, we are still, they, 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 and, 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 as well, we know those, as the, wildlife violations, we're still really, kind of, due to, because, we still, so, we're quite full, to realize we are left with the smallest office for the county, this side of the state, or left with staff, designers of the former counties, at one, at random, and they have a population of about third in size, or four counties. So, right now, my deputies have approximately 100, 150, one of my deputies takes active cases, one of my deputies has lots of human, following cases, and is mission, to do for, case, that we can, who are also, are taking on more, finger work as well, we decided, and we've taken on filing, and creating petitions for people as well, so, solid some of that that's broken as well. So what's happened, it's, our deputies, myself, are important, all, I said, that's the matter of that, for example, Sheriff, who's arrests somebody, and that's the number that people try to get in, but in that way, when someone is probably doing the custody, then it costs, that's important, here, in motion, in trials, all that, which is, you know, getting rid of, or my deputies be following that case, and that, but that hasn't stopped at all. So, in fact, we're showing that my deputies are important more than they have to, in that, so, I should import right now, but I hand up something to another deputy, so, that is where we are right now, so concentrate cases, we don't have to meet the deadlines, we're back on, follow up on them, so. This levy, who gives official hands, they handle those cases, which will, so we're noticing the backlog, what I can have basis, which we need to get to, and that's where the rub is, on those kind of resources, the cases, the good cases, which we don't want to not cost, we'll quickly, more than, to purchase, and, 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 that's true, the adult, the public wants, what they want, and, 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 so, I have, the, 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 the resources. So I, I'm glad we're gonna have to have a session, again, with our community about the other needs, to have the resources, and, 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 and,[1746.48]
We need the basic needs level to accomplish some other violence. Our baseline, number two, safety, things that we want to go out, want to pull out of town. Security and court, but forms. Some other options, which is, which is, the sheriff will be able to handle. Land sweep, computer, expertise, those kinds of things. Want to include, although I have a pretty good baseline idea, like the whole of the county or other, but no, but also I have, you know, I'm a very cool, you're telling me that it's not good. So I've talked to a bunch of staff leaders involved along with the city manager. They thought it was aggressive, but local and they, um, must have can't wait. Just gotta think that we're going to go.
We've waited long enough. I can't wait any longer.
They've encouraged that you get out, start your process, your responsibility, what the true problem is, why you're doing this, answer any of the questions. Those are the things, you know, I have a lot of information here, but you can just pack it out just to show tax required, what Polk County makes up for suit. In most cases, Polk County, you're a very small portion of taxes that people are going to be paying. During the state of Florida, our percentage difference by how the country, the tax rate is one of the biggest percentages. Dallas is the least, in a thank you, because of the content, probably the fact that. So those are things that I've always done. I have most information in theory to make a solid decision. You want to make those internal staff regulations. By the first of December, that's very, if that's not that's all. If you want to have priests, public safety, so much done, they push it out. That's not even active, it's very important. You need to do one way or another to make a decision and then talk to the public after or talk to the people before, make your decision.
I think what I like to do is, I like to move up the drop dead day and get rolling and draw a punch and let everybody know and get into the facts this time. Whenever, whenever the misinformation is out there, you feel a little bit better. And the people know, they're back here with me. I agree with what Mr. Alvin is going to say.
Yes, I think finding some of the folks to get on board with. I think all the fire departments are going to be more than happy to come on board with this. They have a real concern when they're out in the county and there's no sheriff's definitely fit or building a business or this is perhaps or this is, they're going to give something. They're very concerned. I've heard more of that in the last four or five months than I'd ever heard before. We're safety people. I've heard that from not just all the independent companies in Dallas. That's great.
Yeah, there, yeah, no, you're correct. You're saying that, you know, the medics are a big issue because they have to stay. It seems not security won't win until long quarters of time. Often times that requires us calling somebody out with a delayed response and/or if it's close enough to the city, then the city can respond and assist us. But, you know, again, there's no state police to cover for us. And when they are here, they're very limited because they're nowhere in the state of Oregon. First day, super on after two quarters of work. So two or six, the county's pretty vulnerable and actually like the rate of real feed shakey concerns for the fire department. But, you know, that was an unintended consequence of the fire reductions and the fire department didn't realize that until all of a sudden they employed a thing. Yesterday morning, we are in an unattended gap. Natural causes, but still it requires law enforcement to be there to assess it and the DA's office to be involved and the medical examiner's office to be involved. And again, long delay for the fire department is that there will be that somewhere. You still think that you're fine with that. So it has an impact. It has an impact on the community just from a set point of law, the fire department's a volunteer. So they're being held up convenient to go do their things or, you know, get to their work because we're not there. The sheriff's office is not there. Again, that was one of the things that we really, I spent a great deal of time trying to point you to the blue sheets and kind of open their eyes to some of the other things that we do behind the scenes. We're all a pro vation. I laid out for them how many people are on full a pro vation in their city. That with the decline of arrests that don't get prosecuted because we don't arrest them, he can't prosecute them and convict them, they don't go to him. The thing I brought that back around to the chief, I understand is that impacts the jail because if he loses money through one point five, the grid can't transfer to the jail. That, that impacts it. So it.
It's the whole circle.
It is the whole. That's why they call it a system and right now there's several spokesmen in our own system. But public education is doing what we do right now, whether you do it post or free. We did learn some things by getting together and talking with the chief and getting that group, talking with, talking with the public as well, I think, with that. You're getting some input before official name or you just make the decision or you're taking input to try to make a government. So Hampton said, once you make that official decision, this is what we're going out for. You can't change that after. I don't, I, I mean, Mr. Hampton said, we've been in discussion. I've given you the numbers of what I think that we need to really get active. Being functional, it's not, certainly not where I ultimately like to be. But we're just talking about this, that, or basically. So if that number's not going to change, I don't know. I get to make a lot of unpopular decisions here. Probably make a lot of unpopular ones. So I'm on board. I think just, I think Commissioner, you know, especially post. But keep in mind, our members' protection, our members' protection, we will have three months of pre information, without a post information. So where we're going to act.
My information was totally just a representation. And that's the original chance that we kind of were.
Yeah, that's our number two.
Well, your number's going to be different. What are we looking for? Your numbers are going to be different. But whatever we do in this process is going to change. It's going to change who's able to give the message. You are able to give the message because you can't, you can't report.
Like we were talking about, it's currently for by any. If this number goes to two point one, your decision of how many cents per gallon winning the lottery, that's correct. Because we may not know his exact number soon. If you make it before we know that number, you may go, oh my God, here's your, I'm short. I'm not saying it's going to be that magnitude. I'm just saying that that's what I think he's trying to say in life. But the number's another, you're right. It's going to be what it is.
I guess what my fear is, I don't want to make a perception of we're out there giving everybody's opinion on what we're doing and whether to change what we're doing or not. We know what we're going to do. It might change a little bit for our number. But the rest of it's all the same. Whereas we go out there and people can vote and they have all the influence. That's not really what we're doing. We're informing. We're not asking for input necessarily. We are, I mean, we're always listening.
You're going to have a public hearing in your place.
Right. At that point, at that point.
Because you don't want the perception that we're not going to listen to them.
And that's not, but that's not my thing.
That's the thing that worries me. If we don't have any input from the citizens.
We do.
No, I'm just saying, let me finish. Is the fact is, they're going to say, well, they're going to do what they want to. They're not listening to us. That's not it. And then that's, then we won't help. So I think, I think we have to have a little bit of that public input initially.
I agree. I agree.
We can't make the decision and say, okay, now come and give me your information. Because they're going to say, well, you can have them. You're not going to listen to them anyway, go ahead.
Well, they could say that on the other end.
Well, but that's what I would, if I was, if I was out there and I was where I am right now, that's what I'm going to do. And I think one of the things that we have to remember, and it's something that we learned from the last levy process, is we didn't have enough of that public outreach. We didn't engage enough of the urban communities and the leadership of urban communities for them to have full ownership in this decision-making process. So though we, I agree, we know what the numbers are and we need to continue to emphasize to our electorate out there, here's what we know, here's where we are. And we've been saying this now for two years, the trajectory that we're on and where we're going and, you know, using the analogy of looking over the cliff and now slipping over the cliff. So I think people get that, but I do agree that we need to have a process in place that gets us out there in front of people, take where the rocks are going to come because I know that's going to happen. But, but we need to have rooms filled in somehow. I agree with you there, how do we get people to show up? But we need to have rooms filled that are around our communities that include the mayors, include subsidy councils, include chiefs of police and fire chiefs. So in each of those communities so that we can get that on the record, so that we can get more of that voice amplified as we're moving forward. We, I have no shame in telling people, I know where we are, I know what our numbers are. You did elect me to bring this forward to you. At the end of the day, it is the electorate's decision, but we need to find as many partners on this as we possibly can and we started it.
Right. And that's why, great, the city council and the sheriff, the chief and then us, you know, the very, I don't think that we will be seeing less people out of the process. All I'm saying, if we, if we wait too long, we're in this market. We need to, we need the outreach for the people to actually what's going on. If we wait that and the drop dead day, we don't have any information on what we're actually doing at this time, our time to actually be out there, tell people what we're doing is very limited.
Especially how they're saying, I mean, people were all over the last term. My impression, I know there's been great criticism, but we'll say, out, you know, the sheriff. And then the lot of people who's, I have, and a lot of the action, I would say, this is always going to be very challenging and, and it's, people have stepped in power, you don't have a lot of, this is not, we need this to hear, worker jobs, resourcing, emphasizing law enforcement. Another thing, very efficient and selective, but looking good, very well done. It was a good one. And maybe taken everyone's campaign, what a lot of folks know, if you had it, and the ability of sheriffs to put out calls, and it's choices are made, whether we're right or we're right or we're really different from what we're able to do. I've seen, we didn't have a choice to make, we took the results. And I'd like more help, just coming out, you know, and that's the message I'd like to get.
I don't, I don't think they will just relax.
Well, it's hard to change.
You know, I think they thought there was more money, like the sheriff said.
I understand.
But I think, I think a lot of, not a lot, I shouldn't say a lot of, I think a number of folks realized that we weren't, we're small and that, you know, we're in a super stuck situation here financially.
So I, it's a, it's a hard, it's probably a change that I get there. So we're going to keep, keep at it just to let people know this is one moment, it's how it works. And so that's information. Okay. And you already quoted, people are going to criticize, and a great guy's company, like this, like he advanced what we need for the D lines. I'm sure you know, so the guy with the information will go on. You're quoted, people are going to criticize for your wife.
So they're going to criticize us, that's fine. I got lost over it, they're going to criticize me all. If I know it's the right thing to do, I guarantee the citizens are right. I will come back to the joint incentive, but as we move forward, I'm willing to take that.
That's a great segue because we have citizens in the room. So, Jean.
Yes. I'm Jean Sherbeck in Dallas and I participated in the PAC efforts as well. My comment is that I'm completely ordinary voter, but very good in the information. A lot of people don't be a newspaper, you know, they, they look simple, they don't know what's going on. So my concern is that we need to be all registered voters, you know, to get information into the hands of everybody. I just think that's critical because I think that's the only way or people will get information. They're comfortable with that. Now, the leaders of all this community know what's going on, but they're only a small faction. Fortunately, they're not voting, they're mailing much money, so I think we need to keep that as well. We'll have to try to, you know, get people to vote.
Thank you. All right.
I think all these comments are, and like, there are certain things that are, it's all more important, even if you do them later, somehow if you have to get the readers, the large, the parents, the community, the support you need in the big road, and what's, that's what it is. Last time, I had that before, and I'm making it before. I mean, I know Greg talked.
Oh, just their name on a list.
Yeah, I know Greg talked, the city managers, I know, to be there and talk to you. He's going to do something, but he needs to get those people out. How you do that, but to be successful, I don't know. Just having their, just saying that it's supporting you, they don't have enough votes to talk to you about the government. But if you got the government listening to their elected or appointed officials in the urban areas, they'd be, they'd be, they'd be, they'd be, they'd be, they'd be, they'd be.
I was going to think we have to become more, much more, from the city, from the mayors and from.
Right. But I mean, we need to get that out. They need to be talking about it.
They need to be out front.
They need to be out front along with you guys, you guys.
And I, I think.
That's, that's important to do that. And I think it's also, if you're going to have public hearings, or if you're going to have the community, the end of the day, we're going to have all those people there, giving support of the people, talking about the community, not just talking to the community.
Right. And that's why I think it's important to have.
Well, I would also add in here, so from the winter process a few months ago, where we enlisted some help from ESU to do a survey process that was staffed and funded by Oregon consensus so that we could get, you know, some understanding from community leaders in urban communities, that that was somewhat successful, at least it opened the door to start having dialogue in those individual groups. And so that is where we narrowed it down. So we've gotten, you know, conversations with chiefs and sheriff and conversations with city managers, with Mr. Hampton. We've had conversations with mayors. But I don't mind telling you all, the commissioners definitely know this, that when we, when I made a presentation a month ago to make the mayors and city managers group, that we had made a decision to start this process and start moving forward, they were upset. Instantly upset that we had made the decision that we'll start looking at the May of 2015 election day for potential elections. They were upset. And, you know, I mean, Christian Wheeler was in the room and listened to what really turned out to be about thirteen, and sheriff was in the room, about fifteen minutes worth of meeting that I took for that. And, and that's fine. We did that, but what the message from that to me was, we're not done talking. We definitely need to get to those communities and I agree with you. And that's where the challenge is and that whether we make a decision pre-hearing or, you know, what we do, I think it's important that we get out there and we get ownership on, with them, that this is the right thing to do. And we've started that dialogue. We've gotten them on board more or less with, with their professional staff. So I think we need to do that some more. We need to do it in a way that puts their community members in the room with them so that their community members also say, mayor, counselors, chief, all chiefs, you got to help the county move this thing forward. Ultimately, what I'm looking for, you know, my own personal opinion is that the public hearing is a formality for ratifying this, the decision moving forward and that the decision-making is done in the community before we get to that public hearing process. Because ultimately, I think the best, the best outcome here is we have a public hearing that no one needs to show up to, that we've, we've done our job adequately enough that it's, the decisions were made individually. So that's all I'm looking for here, the challenge that I personally have in this is, how do we do it? How do we do the outreach element without a PAC? How do we do a PAC without a decision? And so that's the conflict that I have right now, I just don't fully understand how we do those two things, because to raise money, to do the appropriate outreach, to get people in the room, we need to raise money, to raise money, you need a PAC, to make, to have a PAC, we need to upset, we're going out for an election. So that, to me, is the complications of this, and I'm not certain how we work through it, but we have to have this meeting. So how do we get the people in the room? And I think what Gene's talking about, for example, in the, you know, sending out mailers, we're talking about like ten thousand dollars here to do that, I know that for a fact right now, campaigns are really expensive, and so that's the challenge, and the timeline that we have, how do you raise the money? Again, people are weary of fundraising and campaigns and all those things, so we have a lot of work to do, and, you know, just figuring out how to do all that, and, and again, avoiding the complications of saying, yeah, we're going out for an election, for an, for a levy, because that's not, that's not decided. So I need help on that, just understanding how we work through that little maze there to come out in a place that keeps us moving forward. So that was one of the things that we did talk about, you know, over the last couple of months, is, is whether or not we should have some kind of help in the room that runs campaigns, that works on these kinds of things, to help guide us through this kind of thing, because I'm still not certain how we do it. We all don't do this often enough to really say, oh yeah, this is how we do it. It's a whole lot different than running a commission campaign, this is a much more complicated thing. And so I, I'm just curious, from you all right now, do you think that that's something we should be considering, or if we should be moving that idea forward, looking for those opportunities? I know Greg and I did talk about it over the last couple of months, but I don't know that we've actually, and Sheriff, I don't know, whether or not we've actually put a name down, or somebody that we considered to help us, or if that's even possible.
I'm not a good person, especially right now, you know, by your decision, you're being, you're making out, you know, everybody's on this topic, stand, a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars of county resources to survey, polling, and informationally means to get citizens, to help them mold and shape their public safety level at the start, I have, a large umbrella, and at the end, it's narrowed down to very blank level, or primarily adding jail beds and detention beds, and lots of, and that was successful for them, and I think it's, that was a good, a good pass, and forever, part of it, you have, you should have lots of dollars, you know, there wasn't, you know, so yeah, you have counties that put in a lot of their own resources, and I'm not saying they're gonna have a thousand dollars, okay, however, if you put in fifteen, twenty thousand for survey, push cities, managers, or a lot of them, that was a good idea, that you have time, you have, you know, to be putting that kind of money, you're, 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 you're definitely, don't you like, you have a problem, then, obviously, you don't want citizens, those kinds of things, you know, when we went, last time, we had a public hearing, required by law, and we decided, over two times, we have the nine block, and we even wanted this, because we didn't want, not give people an opportunity to show up. You could hold those public hearings in multiple locations, if you have that ability, that, that would be, but we wanna do that or not, I don't know, but that's one option we have, is have public hearing here, public hearing in all those locations, say what my recommendation, what you recommend from staff, what can we go out in May most likely, for X multiple dollars for X number of years, that's what I'm gonna start in my recommendation, and you accept that, and we'll, yeah, that's, you know, the ability to answer a lot of those questions, you know, that, trust you, without those public hearings, and the city councilors prior, whether it's on their city council, right, and multiple city councilors, you know, they get maybe three or four more people than we do at our, unless they have a hot conference, because that lasts time, yeah, so you don't get a lot of people, doing it this way doesn't guarantee a lot of, it's like, how do you get people to come? Obviously, if we offer a free dinner, maybe you get a lot of people to come, because some comfort has a lot of people, but other than that, I don't know how you get people to show up, other than people that are really, very much for it, or very much against it. We don't get the general public, they're trying to make a honest decision, should I, you know, you get a few, you have a shot supporter, you have, you have, you have some options, yeah, going out, hiring, a personal health director, you know, from those kind of things, that's more of a PAC thing, if you want, like, if you wanna be civil, polling, you know, that's the, the whole, the information gathering, prior to, you know, the decision that you came out with, you run, you're, you're, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to, however, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to.
Well, personally, I don't, I don't believe in the survey process for this, and I, I think if all you're doing, really all you're doing that for is, you think either what, what's palatable, so that you know how hard, you know, how, how big a number you're gonna ask for in a levy, we already know what the math is, that we don't really have many choices there, or what do the voters not know, so that you can know how you're gonna focus the outreach piece better, and I think we have a pretty good sense also, what the voters don't know. And, and again, as Gene touched on it, you know, you can't get information to people that aren't trying to be engaged in a process of getting information, if they don't read the paper, and if they're not engaged in that kind of thing, then you have another, it's a lot harder campaign. But those are all things clarity will do, you know, as, as a PAC, and, you know, you know, pre-election, we would be doing those things, just making sure to get the information out. I don't think we have any real challenges about not knowing what is important, or what we have to do, we, we've been through this, we've been working it a long time, know what the numbers are, know what the requirements are for all the departments, I think we've all done a pretty good job of expressing that, so right now, the challenge is simply, what's the next step? You know, what do we need to put forward? What's the next foot forward that we have to do here? And I think that the outreach elements and getting those organized is important, I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, is that a lot of commissioners, that, you know, as elected officials, are we the ones, or the sheriff and the DA, the elected officials the ones that have to put all that together and organize those meetings and that sort of thing? And though it's public outreach things, I think we're, we're fine with having staff help within those, all of those elements, but we have to be very careful about when it fits over into advocacy, and, you know, those are always the challenges we have in this thing going forward.
Appreciate my main, I think that Greg had a great point, that if, if you're talking about pre-meeting, you can have staff, that's gonna help a lot in setting it up, you can be there, answer your questions even, but once you go post, it's all on you, and the other elected, Marty can't even get involved, and he has a lot of skin of this.
Technically, we can answer factor requirements, you can not promote or advocacy or passing issue, whatever.
But that's what they need, they need it back.
So sheriff and I attended the meeting last time, and I would talk on a pure factor basis of who you should go for, that I asked, the sheriff, and I, because I don't get on, for, 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 for.
So let's just start moving that forward.
I think that's, what we use, now, I think, I'm bored.
So maybe that's what we do, the three of us put a letter together, would maybe even have the sheriff and the DA on board with the letter, that we're reaching out to all those community leaders and ask them to work with us, to start establishing dates for these community outreach forums, so that we can have, and we can be a panel perhaps, and be there to answer questions, and have staff engaged in those from now through January, so that we can get to this, we, we have to go through this process. You know, that's why I'd say, if we can get all that down and get all those, I agree with you, let's get the community leaders to own it, let's have them run it.
Cities could put something out, maybe still, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Everybody get crazy.
Yeah, I get a lot of rage going up if you're on a, but really, you know, yeah, get those, if you get into setting something out, you know, set up the meeting, definitely, I, I think it is important, you know, to have the chiefs and the mayors there, the fire chiefs, fire chiefs, by the way. Bottom line is, we gotta do something, because the train run is still, it's still approaching us really fast, and you heard me in budget for years now, talk about the wave of them, and the, the backing of the wave is coming to him right now, because I can tell you, right now, today, I'm down a lot, in reference, and not every one of those are left, but Sheriff, office, and that's going, you know, to him, to Marty, but unless he gets the supervisor the last night, you know, we're already short of money, and we're potentially looking at more shortfalls, as Greg said, something that, how do you adjust for that, so, we gotta, we gotta start doing something with the community, so I'd really, I would, do some public stuff before we do, answer questions, the ball staff, and set a deadline out there for us, that, okay, we'll do it up to this point, and then pull the trigger, pull the trigger, meaning, where that's been going on, and maybe we get some information, change it, maybe we don't, but we don't at least try to tap out there a little bit, and I'm gonna get the door, if I don't actually, we have to, it would be really critical for us to have those city leaders, FOPs, and those things, if they don't show up.
Okay, so in the interest of moving forward, so we have, we have consensus here that this is what we should do, put this letter together, we can start crafting that with help from staff and with other electives, and start putting stuff together that reaches out to these community leaders, saying, we would like to get something started here, and please, please help us with community forums in your communities.
Okay, you want to put openly, or the idea going out in May, and getting a, or this is what we're looking, how much for that, how long for this?
What are they gonna ask of us?
Yeah, I think you have to add that, yeah, you have to, yeah.
How much money are you talking about? What are you gonna use it for? And a whole myriad of questions that are gonna go to each elected official, that, you know, that's getting a benefit in their department, how is that?
Let me make sure I just, did you just ask, are we deciding whether or not to use commercials to go out in May, or are you asking?
You have, that's all determined after a public hearing.
Right, but that's.
I will make a recommendation, like I did last time, it says A, B, C, and D, which is my confirmed recommendation, if you go out for a public hearing, the duration of that levy is X years, which is a lot, the amount of money that's happened, you accept that recommendation, you set a hearing.
With the intent of May, that can change the process that our intent is made.
By the way, everything I make my recommendation is just a recommendation, the only thing that you take from that is that you're gonna set a hearing to discuss the recommendation, and then you move forward with that or not, is your decision after public, if you show up or not, or whatever. Last thing, my recommendation, the very first thing we did was place a local option levy on with November two thousand thirty, local option levy, it's a, it's a thousand, duration four years, big resolution thirteen eleven, which set the public hearing, outlined what the caption and all that stuff is being, you got to find the publication, or the caption, that was the very first thing I wrote, yeah, so I won't hold that, I do a staff memo for that, that hearing, except why we're doing this and all that, invoke the public hearing, you know, two weeks later, or whatever, after the public hearing, or hearings, we'll make a recommendation, a final recommendation, did, placing, get on the ballot, we tweaked some of the language in those things, we're not that, that, that way, set the duration, set the note, say, kind of, like, we're pushing around that.
Can I, can I, right, your, your letter?
But focus on directly to the mayors, and each individual councilor, council chair, council president. How the body is covering, the mayor precise over the name. Okay, any other inputs? Thank you, appreciate the inputs. All right. All right, oh, great, furs. We're gonna talk about furs.
As part of the reason, as part of the, as part of the, yeah, as you saw last week in the state, when we saw that the furs rates have been sent out to employers, we saw that the headline in the state that said, the school district's gonna save six and a half million dollars, that's nice for them, I'm really happy for twenty-four J, however, in most cases, every other entity went up, well, county's case, our rates are gonna go up about three percent. What that means, the totality is, we're gonna have about a, we have a fifty thousand dollar bigger bill, we started to arrive on two thousand fifteen, and you currently, that isn't all on the general fund, that's got, you know, all of your, all your funds, we have staff, but a chunk of it's still in the general fund, you have two different rates, it's, it's not much, but you have a tier one, tier two, and you have a, which is the general, and then also, but, in my case, all of those rates are going up in the morning, like, in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and we have different percentages, the hard days only in the, the area that's general, it's not changing, it's not changing, we get one fifteen, one, three point four percent, we have ten, one point five eight percent, and the obvious, we have, we have, we have, we have fifty thousand dollars hit to the, to the, to the, to the, we have the dress, for the next two years, July one, two thousand fifteen, through, two thousand thirty, two thousand seventeen, barring any legal court decisions, or mayor, you know, that, with the court decision, that impacted the wrong of, 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 of.
That's the rollback of what was decided. That's the rollback of what was decided.
That will probably play out sometime during 2015. So this is the base case scenario for you, 3% on board.
You always get a base case scenario.
Which is good, but, you know, good on board. I think our rate went down about 3.5% based on the office. I got a shot, I got a reaction.
I'm not saying it's 7,000.
And again, those kind of decisions, that's a good one. Marty's funding, he's gonna get a different piece of a pie percentage. That's only one element of Marty's funding. So remember the last one, our piece of the pie percentage dropped from 4.7 to 1.52 or whatever. But the pie got bigger, so the impact of Marty's office is fair enough. Again, we shrink or slice the pie, but the pie getting bigger, you know, is fair enough. Slice the pie doesn't get bigger and there's some jobs that are already combined. Those are the parts of money that we're trying to, we're trying to. We don't know exactly what the ending number is going to be until the legislature finishes it. Even after the May of action, because you don't know how big that is and why should they have to move it?
They do it every three months.
They take the snapshots. They use the last snapshot based on your three days, sure, blah, blah, blah. Marty's final number, Marty's voting, they were ratified, but they didn't go super. Always want to go to bigger discussion boards. You're gonna have the role of, you work out, please, you know, you show. But PERS is going up there at 50,000.
So do you have a sense of what's the percentage of this increase that these general funders have?
Of your total payroll, 40% are in the general fund. So you can get out of 1.5% if you have to, the general fund. I think the good thing, that we've, we're longer than, we have a levy of over 100%.
The additional bias that we would.
That's a big deal. That only gives you a two.
It's a two-year deal.
Assuming that you went out for a big five-year levy, you still have two first cycles beyond that. At least years three, four, and then if you might have a fifth year, year five, you can definitely get some. First of all, or five, it's not a third. Some Austin, some, we saw that. You're visualized. You double batting, double batting, increasing that in fact. So I don't believe it.
Nothing you can do, nothing totally impossible.
We are in control. But having, but having a public basis, having a good rule, just retired on another. Yes, probably. But it's the reality, which is my, 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 getting out of there. So the way I understand it, if the levy were to pass, you factored in that. I have factored it in on the levy portion. I like factored it in on our current operating, but.
Right, that's, that's my question. We'll be able to.
We don't have a levy. You still got the 125,000 passion, I gotta still deal with.
Double and double.
Anyhow, PERS I'm using, in the levy projections, the 2015 PERS rate. Particularly for all that.
Yeah, once again, oh.
Is there sunshine, is there a little more positive?
I think he.
All right, Melissa Adams, who wants to go first?
Mine?
Seriously, one wants?
Five.
What's that?
Five.
Yeah, the box of, it wasn't in the pack, I was all down, but maybe under the under.
I have.
I believe handcapped, and my recommendations to board, normally, I think a point is, sometimes you don't think that that I don't want to help them. I think she'd be like, man, that'd be a fun. Commissioner Wheeler decided to box the chair. You know, people don't know about this, we go to bucking taxes field, we go point for that. Hopefully, we, you know. Your backup.
Yeah.
Your backup. And then also asking for David Ross and your other team here to be, non-office holding residents to be a point, the box of order. Off the gears, those bucking taxes field cases, then like how people feel about their bucking taxes. And, and we sort of talked before, the bucking taxes, I think they did a lot of two-way doors. Tighten, that's for that. Saw a posting where somebody was on the board. That's the recommendation. You're okay with Ann's recommendation on this?
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the appointment recommendation. All those mayors satisfied by saying that.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else? All right, we're adjourned.